I'm going to go ahead and call this evening's meeting of the Clayton City Council to order and show please that all of the council members are here. Ask the audience to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Move in second that we approve the consent calendar as proposed. All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, unanimous. Next item then is recognitions and presentations. It's one of our favorite things that we do. Tonight's presentation is Do the Right Thing Presentations. And this particular presentation tonight will be dealing with the trait of responsibility, which is being recognized for August and September. And we have students from Mount Diablo View and, excuse me, Diablo View Middle School and Clayton Valley Charter. And I'd like to read the attributes of the trait that we're recognizing this evening. And again, it is for responsibility. And it's doing what I am supposed to do, doing always my best, and being accountable for my choices. So this is a very admirable trait that these students are being recognized for and that their teachers and administrators are recognizing them for being a responsible example. So I'm going to ask that they come forward with representatives from the schools. So the first one will be the Diablo View Middle School, Patty Banister. We've got two students now that are being recognized from the middle school and ask them to come up and join us. Campbell McGee and Mathis Smith. So this would be Campbell and Mathis. And let me read what's on them first. It is a certificate of recognition honoring both of them, Mathis Smith, for doing the right thing at Diablo View Middle School by exemplifying great responsibility, August and September 2018. It's signed by all the council members. So congratulations. I'd like Patty to say a few words while you're being recognized.
Okay, so I'm delighted to recognize Mathis Smith. He is an eighth grader at Diablo View. And while I've always found him as a little shy, he is in our leadership class and he also has the honor of being our liaison in the office. So he has to keep us in line on spirit days. And he also, like, it was supposed to be red, white, and blue day a couple Fridays ago. And he looks at all of us and he says, but I'm challenging you to use all three. So he gives us a little extra challenge because we're always winning, right, Mathis? But he's part of our leadership team. He's the treasurer of the student body. And again, that takes lots of responsibility to make sure you keep your money in line. But he also does a great job at announcements. He is loud and clear and he tells everybody what's happening. So congratulations. So Campbell is also in our leadership class and she's our student body president. And I really want to recognize her for responsibility. She's been in leadership for two years. But this year as president, our leadership teacher is on maternity leave. So Campbell, I feel like, really had to step it up. Starting in August, she had to kind of do a little bit more without her teacher there. So I really appreciate all your hard work. She goes by Kami, but I told her her real name is Campbell, which I understand is her father's middle name. And so I've started calling her Campbell. And people will say, Campbell? And I said, oh, yes, that's Campbell McGee. Congratulations.
I'm going to ask you to come back up when I give the other two awards so you can get a group shot of everyone. So the next awards will be for the Clayton Valley Charter High School. And we have two recipients for that as well. And Sidney Scow. So Bob Rolston is representing the high school. And these read the same as the other certificates. You're being recognized for Do the Right Thing for the recognition trait of responsibility. Clayton Valley Charter High School, signed by the council.
Thank you.
All right, Bob?
Thank you very much. I have a couple things written here about these two students from their counselors. The first one, Trevor, from his counselor Lisa Johnson-Roth. Trevor has shown exceptional skills and responsibility. With a GPA of 4.67 and a perfect score on the ACT, he has proven he can be responsible in all aspects of his education.
Wow.
This student has taken on the responsibility of being a stellar student, working hard not only at his rigorous school schedule, but also taking on a job while applying to many universities and ensuring his future will be bright. His level of commitment and responsibility to his education are nothing short of amazing. He will no doubt go far in life. The next one for Sidney Scow by her counselor Sarah Domain. As president of the Public Service Academy Student Council, ASP's Public Relations Commissioner, local newspaper reporter, maybe you've probably read her articles in the Clayton Pioneer, and varsity team captain, water polo, and swim. It has truly been an honor to be a small part of the growth of this incredibly promising young woman. In speaking with her, it is clearly evident that Sidney made the most of her experience in the Public Service Academy at Clayton Valley. She has developed effective problem-solving skills, further increased her level of critical thinking, and nurtured her collaborative nature and ability to adapt. Through her endless contributions to multiple student programs on our campus, she helps make Clayton Valley a wonderful place for all our students and staff. It has clearly been an honor to be a small part of her growth on this incredibly promising young woman, and we will miss her terribly next year. So these are the two students that we are honoring tonight. And they're quite the students. We're very proud of them and thanks for having us tonight and being able to honor them. Thank you.
There we go. I'll get right in the middle here.
Yep, that would be good.
Good.
Alrighty. Look at me, please. Thank you. Awesome. That's your picture.
And again, congratulations on being recognized. Mayor, while you're sitting down, Trevor and Sidney, where do you guys want to go to school? I'm just curious.
Cornell.
Cornell, okay.
Cal Poly or University of Oregon?
University of Oregon or Cal Poly? That's fantastic. Great job. Good questions. All right, next up is Report Section. We had no planning commission meeting, also no Trails and Landscape Committee, so we'll go to city manager for report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm glad I'm not in high school competing with 4.67 anymore. The chart I placed up on the board up there, I just wanted to let our members of our community as well as the council know once again, yes, they need to go home and do homework. Each year, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission contracts with a contractor to evaluate the condition of all the streets in every community in the entire Bay Area. This report was just released by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or MTC as it's known, September 2018. And overall, as people drive around, you can probably understand that the Bay Area Regional Average of its condition of its roads is 67 PCI, or Pavement Condition Index. The chart underneath that we've included in there is the ranking system that was actually formulated by the U.S. Corps of Engineers way back yea when they were determining the conditions of roads and streets in their jurisdictions as well. And this has been adapted. Uniformly, the contractor measures all the streets. And we're happy to report this year that with our recent repaving contracts as well as the Cape Seal that was done, our city has an average Condition Index rating of 84. That falls into the very good range, which means that in some of the streets are slight or moderate distress. The number-one ranked city is the city of Dublin, and they just had one percentage or one point more than the city of Clayton. We actually tied with the city of El Cerrito. We just note that for the record, however. What is the significance of this? Actually, we use this rating system to guide us in terms of the streets that we do each year, or try to do each year, for overlay. The recent projects that we had, including Keller Ridge, that was a combination of Cape Seal as well as a Slurry Seal. And then we also have just completed the neighborhood street portion of our project as well. People will probably, you know, see that there's a little difference in the surface of the streets that have been recently done. That's because, for the first time through a grant, we introduced cut pieces of rubberized material. That's to help the resiliency and extend the life of the street. And that's important because it's a require, not a requirement, but we really want to stay on top of keeping our streets in condition. Because as you go further down in that list, the longer you wait or delay, or a city or community waits to repave its street, it actually takes more money to reconstruct the street than it is to continue to have the surface being redone. So we're pretty pleased with that, that overall in the entire Bay Area, we ranked with number two with the city of El Cerrito. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to report that out.
Well, thank you very much. I think people have seen the results in person, driving the streets of Clayton. So I know my neighborhood has been resurfaced and many of the streets and neighborhoods have seen that improvement. So we're very glad that we got that high ranking tied for second in the Bay Area.
Yeah, and just wanted to note for the record as well that we start in the worst streets and go up. So the mayor's note that his street was repaved had nothing to do with, you know, his seating there as the mayor in terms of the ranking. So I think actually, the lowest street we now have is at a PCI of 70, which is in a very good. And there are cities, in fact, that are down in the 25 to 49 ranking.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just one comment regarding paving and striping, particularly in downtown. As you recall, at the last council meeting, I mentioned, and I noticed that Scott Alman was here, they have preliminarily marked the striping for Main Street and S Center and so forth. And happy to report, we have gained a full parking space downtown on Main Street. And I gather that's also in the works that is going to get the parking lot at 6095 across or between the church, and that's going to get restriped at some point.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Alman and I talked about it today.
Great.
All right, thank you. So now we go to city council for reports on what you have attended on behalf of the city since our last council meeting. So I'll start with Councilmember Diaz.
Well, it just so happened that Saturday morning, the 22nd, a group of us from the Business Association, we did cleanup of the striping that was on the curbing throughout town from the last Art and Wine Festival. There was some mix-up on the how to actually clean that, but we had a crew of people out there and we did it in about an hour and 20 minutes. And we got it back to somewhat normal and ready for the Oktoberfest that's taking place this weekend. The next day on Sunday, I attended what has been characterized as the Fallen Cowboy Memorial at the Clayton Club, where over the past eight or so years as a tradition, they recognize the passing of some of the citizens that come in and out of Clayton and have a really nice event to recognize them. Family members come out and pay tribute to each one of the, as they characterize, fallen On Monday, the 24th, attended the League of Women Voters Candidates Forum. It was very interesting and a very informative event. Then on Thursday, the 27th, I attended the CBCA Business Association Mixer. And then finally, on Saturday, the 29th, I participated in the Third Annual Memorial, Ibsen Memorial Bachi Tournament. That's all I have.
Councilmember Pierce.
Thank you. Yes, last week, I had the honor of representing the cities of Contra Costa County at the Association of Bay Area Governments General Meetings. We had the Finance Committee, the Legislative Committee, the Advancing California Finance Authority, and the Executive Board Meetings, all meeting in one day. Covered quite a few issues, went over the legislation that had been signed to date in Sacramento, and some of us were keeping our fingers crossed that others would not be signed, but unfortunately, 2923 was to our lack of or loss of local control. And that's a big concern. The next day, I attended the Bay Area Regional Collaborative, which is where the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the Association of Bay Area Governments, the Bay Conservation Development Commission, and the Air Board all get together to talk about issues of planning in the Bay Area and how we can make sure that we're all working in the same direction instead of at cross purposes. And we had a really good report on resiliency, sea level rise, and how we're going to combat that, as well as some talking about earthquake preparedness and that sort of thing. Also attended the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, four different meetings there. That is where the pothole report that you just saw referenced was released, and I immediately emailed it over to the city. And I think one of the things that's interesting to remember about that is while Clayton is doing very, very well, we are a relatively young city. Our streets and roads are not particularly old by comparison to many cities. The other thing to note is that we have taken really, really good care of them. We've been vigilant about making sure that we keep them maintained and that they don't fall into disrepair. And I would also note that the one that we were tied with for second, El Cerrito, has a full one-cent local sales tax that they use to take care of their roads. And they have been in the process of rebuilding their roads over the last several years because they got to that horrible state of disrepair so that they were actually unsafe. And many of their roads had to be literally dug up and rebuilt. And of course, being built on a pretty hilly site didn't help them either, but they have spent a fortune getting them back into good shape. But it did cost their residents quite a bit in addition to the sales tax they pay regionally. I also had the honor on Saturday of attending the Martinez Archives Crawl, which was put together by the Martinez Historic Society and the County Historic Society. And I was there representing the Clayton Historic Society and talking about the events and things that we do out here. And we took a notebook of all the archives that we have and the information that we maintain, the genealogical information, that sort of thing, on the history of Clayton that we maintain at the museum. And we got quite a few folks who I think will be coming to visit Clayton because many of those folks have relatives that started out in Clayton back in the 1850s. So it was a fun day for all and a chance to share Clayton and how wonderful we are with the rest of the county.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shuey.
All right, I've been a little busy with what the other candidates here. We've been doing a reelection campaign, but I did have the opportunity to go to the CBCA meeting with the rest of the council on Thursday. And it was held down at the Bachi Courts, which basically CBCA has been responsible for. And they were putting together a new program for pavers to help, again, pay for it and the maintenance, the upkeep, and to put it in ship shop, ship, whatever.
Ship shape?
Ship. And it's just really, really good to see everybody out there supporting it, and it was a fun event.
Good. Councilmember Catalano.
I have nothing else to report other than just business towards Oktoberfest, which is coming up this weekend. So we are still, we're doing pretty good on volunteers, so we're still short maybe about a handful, five, six, seven people, so quite a bit, but this weekend, Saturday and Sunday downtown.
Okay. I also attended the Candidates Forum on September 24th, held in this room with all four candidates who handled a number of questions that were moderated by the Diablo Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Very well attended. And also, we did tape that, the city did, and it is available on the city's website if people at home or here want to view that for the first time or just to review that as far as comments made at the forum. That's available on the city's website. Also attended the monthly CBCA meeting. As Vice Mayor Shuey indicated, it was held at the Bachi Court. They're looking at some improvements, and they wanted the club members to see those improvements before they were asked to vote on them. So that's been a very successful partnership that the CBCA entered into with the Ibsen family to build that park as a gift to Clayton. And it was something that Kent Ibsen wanted to do to honor his father, Skip, who had started Skipulines. And he was able to do that while Skip was alive and able to enjoy it himself. And he took great joy at coming down and seeing that court being used every night during the week and also for two league games on Sunday. And then it's open for anyone to use during the day and also on Saturday. So I encourage anyone to go down and it's very easy to learn the game of bachi, and it's a great family effort. Okay, next up then, we do have an opportunity for the city council candidates to get up and once again introduce themselves and explain why they're running for council. Jeff Wan, would you like to start off, please? I'm mixing it up a little bit instead of always going the same.
Be surprised. Order. Hello again. Again, my name is Jeff Wan. I am an active CPA in private industry, the treasurer of my small HOA. I've been a Clayton resident for a little over nine years. My family moved to Clayton to raise our kids. We came for the great schools, safe neighborhoods, small-town feel. I think it's incredibly important that people have the opportunity to participate in their government, the opportunity to be heard, and the commitment from leadership that they will respond as appropriate. For too long, that opportunity hasn't been available here. Yes, anyone can come to these council meetings and speak for three minutes, but there's no requirement to actually engage in dialogue at these meetings. There's talking, but no communication. That's because the council is under no obligation to respond to questions, to please, or anything really for that matter. For example, at the last, or at a previous council meeting, I prepared a list of questions. I posed them during my three minutes. I presented a copy for each council member in written format so that you could respond during your turn. But the council declined the opportunity to address those questions or even acknowledge them. They sat untouched for the duration of the meeting. When substantive comments and questions go repeatedly unaddressed and unanswered, it creates a sense of being ignored. It's the same thing when you label groups that have different views as vocal minorities. It minimizes what they have to say as if it's not important and treating minority views as if they don't matter. That's why communication is such a key part of my campaign. Direct questions should receive direct answers, period. With today's technology, those who are charged with governance should meet the people where they are and provide as many means of communication as reasonably possible. Sure, there's these council meetings, as I said. There's also other on-the-record public gatherings, like the debate that you mentioned earlier this week. But there's also a large group of Clayton residents that participate in other ways, like on Nextdoor. Why doesn't the council participate there? Or when they do, they avoid direct questions. Why is Councilmember Pierce proud that she only ever posted there two or three times? I can set up an online forum in a day, and I can make it public, and that's very easy to do. A subreddit, how about a Twitter account? Something public that has extremely low barriers to entry and is available to all would go a long way towards ensuring that folks have that opportunity to participate. It doesn't have to be just one thing, though. I don't know what forum it could take, but these ideas, these are super low-cost and easy to implement. I do know that an opportunity for dialogue should exist, and right now, it's lacking. There will always be those who don't have a desire to participate, which is their choice and they're right. But these types of things are easy to do, and they would provide a greater opportunity for people to engage. So while I want to preserve all of the wonderful things about this city, there are some areas where more of the same is no longer okay. More of the same is when the council no longer listens to the people it represents. No, I am here to speak truth to power. At some point, the council lost its way, and I'm running for city council to correct that. Thank you.
All right. Next up, I'll call on Vice Mayor Shuey.
Thank you. I have been on the council for 16 years and been part of volunteering and helping to run the city for 20-plus years, being on the Community Services Commission before council. If you like what Clayton was, has been, and will be for the last 20 years and in the future, I've been part of that. And I think both of the opponents that are now saying that I have lost my way, they have indicated that they came to Clayton for all the reasons that I participated in and made sure we're still there. We are still one of the safest cities in California. I attended Clayton Valley High School, and I was particularly pleased to see that we still do the Right Thing program, and we see these kids that are graduating from the conversion charter and just have a wonderful, bright future ahead of them, and I hope that they, you know, continue in that great way. There's a lot of promises and a lot of statements being made during election season, but you can't fact-check the future. And what do you have to look forward to or look back to and see, hey, does somebody stand by what they say? And part of that is looking back at what they've done to date. And there's only two candidates that have proven a commitment to Clayton over decades, and that is myself and CW. You need somebody. You should demand somebody with the experience, the knowledge, and the commitment to Clayton. And those are the only two candidates for that. We saw something on the Pavement Condition Index tonight, and that is a result of funds that we get from the state. My opponents would like us to basically tilt at windmills and fight the state on any issue that they don't agree with. When you fight the state and you don't play ball, you do not get transportation funds, you do not get housing funds, and our streets would not be in the condition they are in. You fight the fights that you need to, you fight the fights that you can win, and we have done that for 20-plus years, and I'm proud of the record that we have. And finally, we on the council, we talk to people every day who ask us questions. We see people in the store. We have done an amazing job of putting our city website, getting it updated, and trying to take advantage of new technologies and give people the opportunity to be heard. It is just false to say that the city and the citizens are not being heard by the council. They are, and they will continue to be. I look forward to your vote on November 6.
All right. Next up, Brian Bedell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. As you all know and most everybody knows, my name is Brian Bedell. I've lived in Clayton now for a little over three years. And want to keep it the wonderful place that I moved here. But the problem is I've seen some problems, and that's why I'm running. We're now about halfway into what we'll call election season, and I think it's pretty well-known that we've divided kind of into two camps. There's the so-called newcomers, me and Jeff, who want to evoke some change to some of the problems that have arisen in the city council. And then there's the establishment candidates of Mr. Shuey and Mr. Wolf. During the course of this campaign, we've heard a lot of rhetoric from the establishment campaigns. We've heard specifics from me and Mr. Wan. From Mr. Wolf in particular, we hear things like, he has a vision and he wants responsible growth. But we don't hear what those things mean. All we hear is, I want to see how things go. That's not good enough. Clayton voters deserve explanations. They deserve specifics as to what a candidate is going to deliver. So in that regard, I ask Mr. Wolf, and Mr. Shuey for that matter, does the vision that you have include high-density housing downtown? Yes or no? Does the vision that you have for Clayton include selling the downtown lot? Does the vision that you have for Clayton include selling the downtown lot, which would effectively preclude festivals like Oktoberfest that we have coming this weekend? Yes or no? My answer is no. And it's no to my previous question also. Does the responsible growth that you've talked about, does that include things like three-story buildings downtown? Would you consider a three-story building downtown? Yes or no? For me, the answer is no. My position is very, very clear as to where I stand on these issues, and I think Clayton deserves that. Also, with respect to the issue of responsible growth and vision, does your vision include revisiting the parolee housing ordinance to strengthen it so that all residents of Clayton are protected, not just most, and accepting a couple? Will you embrace the request made by Councilman Diaz to revisit and consider strengthening that ordinance? Because I'm not seeing it. Finally, I want to point out that at times, this campaign season, excuse me, has become pretty vitriolic. But it's been kind of one-sided, because while I'm focusing on facts and things that I can focus on that haven't been done, I'm the one being called a newcomer. And at the end of the day, when this is all over, I am perfectly willing, win or lose, to sit down with Mr. Shuey and Mr. Wolf, shake their hand, and move forward. The problem is, when you call people newcomers, it's really hard to do that, because once you single someone out and alienate them, whether it's me or some other young family who's just moved to Clayton, that's divisive, and that doesn't help anybody.
All right. And last would be Carl CW Wolf.
Well, hello, everyone. Let me say that, people at home, that in just over a month, on November 6th, we're going to have to make some choices in Clayton, some very difficult choices, as you can see. As a couple of my opponents have said, it's divided us into a couple of different camps. But the one thing I will say about all of us that are running is that regardless of our motivation, I have to commend us for running, because this is not an easy thing to take on. We all love Clayton in our way. And I just want to tell you about me right now. I'm running for the city council, because as a 30-year resident of Clayton, I know how important it is to nurture and protect the lifestyle that Clayton offers and the values that our community holds dear. Upon retiring from my creative director position at a major corporation, I wanted to find a way to give back to Clayton in a more meaningful way. And I applied for a seat on the planning commission. I was lucky enough to be appointed, and then elected chairperson one year later. Being on the planning commission, though, is an advisory position to the city council. And for me, I'm a more independent thinker, and I find that a little bit frustrating, because I'd like to have more of a voice on what is actually happening and concerning the issues of our city. So that's why I'm running for the city council, have more of a voice in actual decision-making process. And I want to champion all Claytonians, no matter who they are. Voters need to hear facts and understand the complexities and legalities of every single issue. Our future depends upon us coming together to make solid decisions so we can become an even better community. Friends, our future is going to take vision, it's going to take planning, it's going to take great leadership, and it's going to take citizen input. In my 30 years here, I've seen Clayton evolve and grow in a very positive way. We had, if you remember, we had a debate on the gas station issue, which is now a CVS pharmacy. That's what the people decided. How about building Clayton Station Shopping Center, another divisive issue? Or even our Grove Park, people didn't want to have a park, and now people enjoy it every day. Or even this building wasn't here 30 years ago, this library. So all of these things I mentioned and many others are examples of issues that require us to engage in conversation with each other, talking with each other, not at each other. So we need to examine the facts and benefit all Claytonians. In my former job, I learned the art of compromise to bring positive results and to keep an eye on fiscal responsibility, which all of Clayton will deserve. They expect it, and they deserve it. And I'm a proud CBCA volunteer, a badge of honor that I wear proudly, and volunteering connects me more with our community. So I take Clayton very seriously, and I will serve Clayton, all Clayton, with my two ears and my one voice. And I want to say that Clayton is my new life's work. I'm retired now, and I'm just getting started. Thank you.
All right. Next item on tonight's agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. So this is the public's opportunity to address their concerns for items that are not on this evening's agenda for action or hearings. And this would be items that they would bring up and alert the council to concerns that they're having about the community. So I do have a number of speaker cards. People have asked to address the council in this session. First one would be Marcy Longchamps.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Napper, Ms. Gentry, who's not here, and city attorney. My name is Marcy Longchamps, and I live on Coyote Circle. I am here tonight with some questions and comments. Please let me preface that when I am using the word "you" in my questions and comments, I am referring to the city council, the city manager, the city community director, and the city attorney. The parolee housing ordinance will be in effect two days from today, October 4th. Two days. What has been done since you unanimously voted to pass this ordinance? With all of the many, many meetings that you are all attending, I have to wonder, have you begun exploring the issue of public versus private parks? What are you, the city council, going to do in order to make all parks, whether they are public or private, safe from convicted felons living near them? A park is a park is a park. Babies, toddlers, children, and teenagers all play every day in the park on Coyote Circle. Is their safety not a concern to you? Do the right thing. I find it very interesting that this month's theme is responsibility. Have each one of you been responsible in the last two years when you have the time to further research this now-passed ordinance? And what's going to happen in the next 30 days to my street, Coyote Circle? The flavor of the day is now the focus of a sign ordinance. A sign ordinance? Really? And am I to understand that it is now more important for the city council to deal with political signs in Clayton rather than dealing with convicted felons living next to a park and a playground? When I listened to a taped meeting regarding the sign ordinance, Mr. Shuey said, and I quote, "It's a risk that I'd be willing to take," end quote. And that was in regards to allowing the sign ordinance to pass. And then there was laughter from the members of the city council. So it's okay to take a legal risk with yard signs, but it's not okay to take a legal risk to ensure the safety of all, all of the children in Clayton, not just the ones that live in certain areas. I am at a loss for words. You, and when I say you, that I'm referring to all of the members of the city council and the city staff. To no surprise, you continue to disappoint us again and again. Thank you.
Next up, Jeff Wan.
Well, I am going to talk about that sign ordinance, actually. I was hoping that you could elaborate on when the council plans to address it, that the ordinance is no longer being enforced. From the latest Mercury News article that highlighted the problematic ordinance, it indicated that it wouldn't be taken up until after November, and I'm wondering why that is. I see there's nothing on the agenda today. There was nothing, no action items on the agenda at the last meeting either. Can it be added to the next meeting? I'm not sure exactly what your process is for determining what goes on the agenda, but there's nothing on today, and it was indicated it would be sometime after November. I also note that in the article that was on the Mercury News, as well as comments that Councilmember Catalano posted on Nextdoor, that both Councilmember Catalano and Councilmember Pierce insist that when they were voting on this ordinance, they thought they were only voting to limit the size of individual large signs. That's what I read from the quote from your interviews. And you were not voting on the aggregate signage on a property. But I can't reconcile that with the evidentiary record that clearly demonstrates understanding and direction that the restriction was to apply to aggregate signage and not individual signage, as you now state. Can you reconcile that discrepancy? Because it's something, one of those statements has to be false. Thank you.
Next up, Brian Bedell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I had actually planned on speaking on a different topic today, but I realized, even before Ms. Longchamps took the lectern, that in two days, the ordinance that you passed goes into effect. An ordinance that singles out the neighborhoods of Keller Ridge and the Shell Lane area and exposes them to the threat of parolee housing, the threat of safety, the threat of criminals among them and their children. I found it particularly galling that at the Friday taped roundtable session, not the one that was here, but the one that's taped, that's available on YouTube, and you can find on my website and on my Facebook page, that Commissioner Shuey casually said, in passing that ordinance, "We made lemonade out of lemons." Lemonade out of lemons, sir? I don't think the people on Keller Ridge or Shell Lane are enjoying that lemonade. You might, because you're not going to have that problem in your neighborhood, but they will. And even if you're correct, if all of you are correct in your reasoning that we probably won't ever have parolee housing in Clayton, because it's just, it's not an attractive thing, even if you're right, on Thursday, the residents of Keller Ridge and Shell Lane will have their world changed forever, or at least until that ordinance has changed. Why? Because as of Thursday, if they try to sell their house, they've got to disclose that they live in an area that's zoned for parolee housing. I've talked to a few real estate agents, and you might want to pay attention to this, Ms. Catalano, rather than looking at your iPad, and they've estimated that property values could be impacted as much as 10% with that disclosure. So with one swift move of the pen in your vote, you have taken away tens of thousands of dollars per resident, simply because you decided to single them out. I don't think they're going to be enjoying any lemonade. So with that, Mr. Shuey, I say, enjoy your lemonade. And I think it's kind of symbolic that at Oktoberfest, there's that stand that usually sells those big yard-sized lemonades, all-you-can-drink. And so everybody knows, I will be there, and I will be having some of that lemonade. Not as a mockery to the Keller Ridge folks, but in sympathy for them. Because I hope that if I'm elected to this council, not one of the first, the first thing I want to address is changing that ordinance, so I can share that lemonade with them. So when you see me drinking that lemonade, I'm drinking with you.
All right. Have one more card. H. Abram Wilson.
Good evening. I'm H. Abram Wilson, and I'm a candidate for the Community College Board. I've lived in Contra Costa County for almost 40 years with my family and have a commitment. My background, an investment banker with the principal with Bank of America Securities. I was elected, the first elected mayor of the city of San Ramon. I had the privilege of being the chair of the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference. And as I sat here, I realized why I want to run. Mathis, Campbell, Trevor, Sidney, the future, and all the other residents that can take advantage of our community college system. It's one of the best in the United States. Our community college are essential to the future of our students and our country. As mayor of San Ramon, over the last decade, I have participated with the community college. I've been on the Community College Foundation Board, and we have a new plan, a program that I've just started, committee helping veterans at the community college. It's a program that gives them a certificate, veterans going into business. And I believe that is the most important thing. And it's open to everyone. But again, it's the importance of education and bringing everyone in. And we can only do this by getting together with our communities, our business communities, and all be on the same page. Education is one of our, I think, the best resource we have in America. I have a commitment to work with everyone, to ensure that anyone who wants and needs to further their education, that we, the community college, will be there for them. Whether it is a vocational pursuit, or whether it's to get a certificate, or whether it is to go into a four-year university, it's so important. We're constantly hearing that we can't find students or employees. One of the things I want to do at the community college is bring business into the community college, so that there isn't that gap in between, so they don't have to be reeducated. All those things, counselors. It's imperative that we are there for our students and anyone who wants to achieve an education. I appreciate your vote and your support, and I will work for you, because as mayor, they taught me, and I've learned, that I work for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. I have another one here. Next up was Frank Gavida.
Gavidia.
Gavidia.
Gavidia. My name is Frank Gavidia. I live at 104 Gold Rush Court. Members of the council, I've been coming to the meetings since May, I think. Last time I was here, Councilwoman Pierce was mayor before all of this got started, when the gas station was coming up. That was the last time we had all the division that we have, like we have today. I wasn't happy then, yeah, and I'm part of the crowd that's not happy now. I want to touch on one point that Councilman Shuey brings up, that he says that you guys are totally available to us, or that you do talk to all of us. And I'm going to disagree. I've been here since May, and I've spoken about many things. Only one of you has made any effort to talk to me. I'll admit, that first conversation with that council member was spirited. We've had several since, and you know what? I respect this council member now a lot. I've gotten to know this member, and I understand this member. But the other four of you have made no effort. Now, I'm not part of CBCA. I was in 2004, after listening to the officers of CBCA make some of the comments, calling them newcomers, questioning why they don't volunteer, questioning why lots of us don't volunteer. I just don't happen to volunteer at CBCA. I volunteer somewhere else, and just like Brian, I'm not going to say where. But I don't run in your circles. When you're huddled together at the free concerts with your sponsors, that's not inviting to the great unwashed masses. Do I have to buy in to be part of that? How do I get to be part of that? I don't. All right? All I have is, maybe I can email you guys, and I might hear back. And judging from what I've heard from other citizens, is they don't hear back. So you say you're available, you've been in office 16 years. I've never met you, ever. I've been at Ed's when you've been there. There's one other council member I have met, and only because he does attend the Memorial Day ceremonies, which I attend every year, for obvious reasons. I haven't seen you there. So you're available, but just not to me. And to a lot of folks, like Marcy, and to all the folks who have spoken since May against fulcrum. Fulcrum, the parolee housing, you don't seem available. Now, the election's going to end. Whatever the results are, this problem's not going to go away, and it happened on your watch. You have people that are unhappy. I don't know what the percentage is. We'll find out when the election happens. But when you have that many people unhappy, it can't be good. So you're going to need to do something about it. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Appears to be everyone that wanted to speak then on this item. So we'll move on to the next, which would be public hearings. We have none scheduled. Excuse me.
I'd like to actually comment under public comment, if I may. There were some items brought up tonight that I'd just like to address very quickly. There was a comment about growth and where are we going? I was reading a report just tonight that talked about the number of permits issued in all the various cities over the last several years. In the last four years, Clayton has issued 10 permits. One for a second granny unit, and two for the housing down on Southbrook, and six for the units over off of Pine Hollow. Oops, the other one was outside of town, on Pine Lane, but it's close. So those are the only permits that have been issued by this city. So I wouldn't say we have rampant growth. We talk about the vision, including selling the downtown lot. The reason that the city bought the downtown lot from the church was to control what happens on that piece of property. Before that piece of property can have anything built on it, there must be a project presented to the community before it's even submitted as a final project to the city. That's our process. We require any potential developer to present a project to the community for comment before it is presented to the planning commission or the city council. That's what happened with the Fulcrum project. They were directed by us to go to the community and ask for public comment. They got public comment. They chose not to pursue the project. We own that property. We control what happens on that property until the city council has a chance to look at, and it'll go through the planning commission after public meetings, lots of public hearings, lots of environmental study, until something is presented to us and we can guarantee that it suits the city of Clayton, nothing will happen on that property. It sounds to me like that's what some of the people in this room want. Which leads me to the issue of the festivals. As someone whose husband is the one who makes the maps for the festivals to get all the permits, I have seen the placement, the spacing of all the activities. I've asked him to play with it occasionally and say, what would happen if we took everything off of that parcel? Could we still fit it in downtown? Yes, we can. Won't look exactly the same, but it still all fits in downtown. The carnival still fits, all the vendor booths still fit, all the activities still fit in downtown Clayton. Until the time comes when we all find something we want to build on that property, the city will maintain ownership and absolute control over what happens there and on any other parcel that the city owns. The whole reason for us to own that property is so that we absolutely and finally control what happens on that property. And it won't be until the citizens of this community agree on a project that we will do anything to allow someone else to build on those properties. So saying we're selling off and losing control is absolutely wrong. Three-story buildings downtown, whether it's a three-story, a two-story, a one-story, we have an absolute height limit. Whether it's one, two, or three stories, it can only be so tall. We have rules about that. And just for Mr. Gavidia, if you're emailing about a matter that will be coming before us on a future agenda, such as the Fulcrum project or something like that would have been, we are precluded from answering you and giving any opinions to you. It is much safer for us to not reply and to refer them through staff for responses. Otherwise, we could jeopardize our ability to vote on any future project. And I want to make sure that I maintain my ability to vote on any project that comes before this city. So those are the answers to some of your questions. I just felt it was really important to get some of the facts out there.
I'd like to open it up to any other council members. Want to respond?
Can I make just, I want to just add one quick clarification. There was a comment made about how to contact council members. If you go to the city's website, all of our contact information isn't there. We have our email addresses there. There are phone numbers to everyone. My phone number rings directly into my cell phone.
That's true.
People do contact us. I get emails. I get phone calls. And I get, and I'm sure the other council members get requests like this too, but I get questions from everything, from wild turkeys to traffic conditions and you name it what. And I do want to echo what I think Julie said, is, you know, when, there are obviously some limitations as to what we can communicate with. If there's an item that is about to come before the council for a decision, I'm not going to prejudice myself by forming an opinion before I've had a hearing in this room and before I've had all the information in front of me. That would pre, if I did that and formed an opinion before I even step into this room and listen to all the input, I would not be able to vote on that matter. It's that simple. But, you know, like I said, the city website has all of our contact information, lots of people contact. I know me, and I assume the other council members as well. It's fully available. And obviously, people do pull us aside. I get pulled aside in a lot of things when I'm out and about in town. And Mr. Gavidia, if you want to talk to me, and we're in the room, just pull me aside and ask me a question. Thank you.
May I stand? No.
No. You can speak with her after the meeting. We're certainly open after the meeting to talk to anyone.
There was an answer, and I think you misinterpreted what I meant. Just like, one second. We're not on the agenda.
If you can keep it brief.
We're not doing a second round.
We're not opening up for discussion.
No, let me just, no, it's clarification. Councilmember Pierce mentioned that she had heard from many of her constituents before the parolee housing. Those weren't people here. So obviously, they're speaking to you. You mentioned your dentist specifically. So he gets to talk to you. I don't. And that's what I was referring to, is that I don't get to talk to you. All right? When I see you huddled with your sponsors, who do appear to have a whole lot to say, that's what I was referring to. That's my clarification. Thank you.
All right.
The only comment I want to make regarding the downtown piece of property that is under discussion. I've chaired the Art and Wine Festival for the past two years. We purposefully changed the footprint in anticipation should that property develop, and we wanted to see if we could still put on the event without utilizing that open space behind the church property or church office. That's why we moved the music over to, by kinder care. That's why we moved other activities over to the park. So if that ever happened, that piece of property, which the city controls, gets developed, we know how to put those events on, not utilizing that, and it works. We did it the last two years.
All right. Thank you. Well, what I was going to address has already been covered, basically, on the CBCA trying to anticipate any potential changes to the footprint of our events. We know how popular they are, and they're something certainly the club wants to continue offering. So we're trying to anticipate our evolving downtown area so that we can continue to do that. Other items, as indicated, we're all available. Our website and telephone numbers are listed on the city website, and invite anyone that does have questions to contact us. And if we're able to, we attempt to respond. So thank you for your comments. We want to encourage people to take advantage of this public comment session for exactly what they did tonight, and that's address issues that were not on the agenda itself. Any staff comments? Okay. Then we'll move on then to the next item, which would be public hearings, but we have none scheduled. Action items, also none scheduled. So we'll go to council items if any council members would like to propose items to be dealt with in the future. All right. We have no closed session, so we will adjourn this evening's meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is October 16th, 2018. Thank you for coming.